I think we're losing, we have two aldermen who are in the restroom. I hear them thudding up here. There we go. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Fruein.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Milowamway.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here.
And we're going to start with a public comment that we have at each meeting, and we are starting with a familiar face. Mr. Alton Franklin, would you please come forward? Thank you. You know the routine.
... position or the programmatic administrative things, there's a lot of personal development that goes in, and I was fortunate enough, blessed you might say, to attend a class lately on Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And it really kind of keyed in with a lot of the things that have been going on here. The basic premise of it is really about being proactive, about looking for the win-win is the part that really came out in my mind. And over the years that I've been coming here, there's been a lot of contention, and it always seems like there has to be somebody wins and somebody loses. And I would hope that maybe this is a trigger that other folks might take a look at the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People because there's some good material there that I think would be well worth the council's time, not only to read, study, and learn, but to apply, especially with regards to the win-win. From the get-go, I am very much mission and solution oriented. I'm about getting the job done and getting it done right. And right doesn't mean Alton's way. I've grown enough that I no longer mire myself in all those idiots if they just do like I'd want them to do, everything would be great. I tend to get a little bit more introspective, take a look at why something that's going on bothers me, what can I do to make it better, and how can I improve the situation for others such that, and this was almost subliminal in nature, I didn't really see it as a conscious thought, I saw it more as just the results that came out. All of a sudden, it seemed like people were more receptive to what I had to say. Things got done better, and people felt better when we got to the other side of it because everybody was a part of the same team. Folks, I'm on board. Let's get the team going. Thank you.
Thank you, Alton. We're going to move right along to our recognition and appointments. We're going to start with the introduction of Sue McLoughlin, interim Assistant City Manager. I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, Mr. Hales.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very fortunate to have Sue McLoughlin. And Sue, if you would stand and come forward, I'm going to have her come up to the dais. Sue comes to us recently from Lincoln here in Illinois. She was serving as a contract city manager down there, has had other services. She has a master's degree in public administration, started her city manager career up around the greater Chicago area. I'll have her share that with you in just a minute. But Sue is working with us as a contract employee during the process of recruiting and appointing a permanent Assistant City Manager. So with that, Sue, just have you kind of share with them a little your background, where you've worked during your career, and just the purpose here tonight, just introduce Sue to the council and the public and see if you have any questions for her. Sue.
Thank you, David. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. I thank you for the opportunity. It's exciting to work again in such a large, full-service community. As David said, I actually got my bachelor's degree here at ISU years ago. Then I went back and got my master's in public administration from NIU. I am a credentialed manager through ICMA, and I know that you're very active with ICMA as well. I've served just over 10 years as a city manager in different communities. I started up in the Rockford area and then went, as David said, in North Aurora, which is right next to Aurora, which is currently the second-largest city in Illinois. So I was there for five years and then came down to the central Illinois area for a couple of years. So have enjoyed local government and city management and am very happy to be here, and I thank you for the opportunity. I am married, my husband is retired, and I have a teenage son, so.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Any comments, questions for members of the council?
If I could just add one other thing, I've asked Sue to kind of oversee, as Barb recently did, the Departments of Water, Public Works, Planning Code Enforcement, as well as Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts, as well as some other miscellaneous. So having her kind of help in overseeing those particular departments. So turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you again, Sue. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We're going to... We're going to continue our introductions on Item 6B as amended, Nora Dukowitz, and I'm going to turn it over to City Manager David Hales.
Mayor and council, we're very fortunate to have a professional communications individual in the, Nora Dukowitz serves as our first communications manager. I've worked with many communication manager specialists over the years. In fact, you know, it's been a critical position. Nora comes to us, as you may have seen in the press release, not only working with the town of Normal and here in the city, but we just have very high aspirations and hope to have Nora assist us as we continue to improve upon our communication engagement with the public at large. So Nora, would you just share a little bit more about your background with the mayor and council?
Absolutely. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I'm really excited to begin this new position. I came to the Bloomington-Normal community a little under a decade ago, thinking I would stay here for a couple of years. I came here, relocated with a private real estate investment trust, and I absolutely fell in love with this community. As David mentioned, I served as the town of Normal's first uptown marketing manager from 2006 to 2010, and I'm actually celebrating my three-year anniversary with the city today. I was previously the marketing associate for the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department and truly enjoyed my time there, and I'm truly looking forward to serving this community in this new capacity.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Alderman Sterns.
Thank you. Not for you, Nora, but great to have you. David, I was just curious, obviously this lady is coming from another department. Check correct?
Yes.
So will we be replacing her position in the other department, and will we continue to have the other spokespeople in various other departments for the city?
When we're always looking, you know, for greater staff efficiency, so it's an ongoing discussion with John Kennedy, the department director, how we can better, you know, either backfill or look at making sure that those needs in Parks, Recreation, Cultural Arts are addressed, you know, appropriately. So it's still kind of a work in progress at this point in time.
So we're not sure about that?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
And Mr. Kimmeling, would you please come forward? You're not new, but we've got a proclamation here. And this is the proclamation declaring May 18th to 24th as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, oh, wait till you get up here, I'm sorry. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience certain illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of the emergency, of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishment of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And now therefore I, Mayor Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim May 18th to 24th, 2014, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you, Mr. Kimmeling. I may present this to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And before we go into the next item, I wonder if I could, if you're one of the appointees, with the exception of Alderman Karen Schmidt, who will pull off the consent agenda for just a minute, I wondered if Paulette Hurd, if you're here, if you could stand, Robin Vandermay, and Patricia Martin, and Bill Wilson, if you would stand, please, and be recognized? Okay. Thank you very much. And under the consent agenda, I would like to go ahead and pull Item 7C3, and that is Cultural District Commissioner Appointee Karen Schmidt, a reappointment, and it's only for the purposes that Alderman Schmidt can vote on the rest of the consent agenda except her own appointment.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to pull 7G as well.
7G?
Right.
Okay. 7G, thank you, sorry. Okay. Anything else that anyone, Alderman Schmidt, excuse me, Sterns?
I'd like to pull 7E and 7H.
Okay. 7E and H, Alderman Sterns. Okay. So that was 7G, Alderman Milowamway, and 7E and H, Alderman Sterns. That's correct. Okay. All right. I wonder if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, minus the items that were mentioned.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Fazini, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fruein.
And Mayor, with regard to both the consent and regular agenda, I have not received any monies or financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in these agenda items, and I thank you for that.
Okay. I wonder if we could go ahead and begin the voting on the consent agenda minus the items that were pulled. Madam Clerk, the motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce. Thank you. Now, we can move right along if we could move to Item 7C3, Cultural District Commission, and Alderman Schmidt will leave the room. Is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by several people, Alderman Painter. Any discussion? All right. I wonder if you would go ahead and vote, please? Oh, excuse me, I have to clear the results. Terribly sorry. The motion carries eight, sorry. Motion carries eight to zero, no nays to announce. Thank you. Now, we move right along to Item 7G, Alderman Milowamway.
Yes, I'm just going to step out. I'm pulling it because it's an ISU-related.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve Item 7G on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lauer. And I wonder if we could go ahead and vote on that? Oh, shoot. All right, let me... I'm not sure why I only have six.
Mine wasn't blinking. No, I didn't vote.
Oh. No, I've got you.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. The motion carries, in spite of technological difficulties, from eight to zero, there are no nays to announce. And I will clear the results, and I'll stop. I wonder if we could get Alderman Milowamway to come back in, and then I will turn to Alderman Sterns in a second here. Welcome back. Okay. Alderman Sterns, you had pulled two items, so if we could start with 7E, please? Thank you.
Right, and thank you. And this applies to, I believe, the Director of Parks and Forestry and all things green. If I could ask John to, a couple of things, and I follow, I mean, it's really pretty minor, and I appreciate your answers earlier on the other things. But I think, I just want to understand, is this primarily about emerald ash borer? Is that?
It's not, it's not limited to emerald ash borer. It can be included into other problem trees that are causing infrastructure issues.
Right. And is it anticipated, though, that this, I mean, the majority, I would assume, I mean, help me, I know there are other problem trees, and I want to ask about one of them.
Based on, based on the parameters of the intergovernmental agreement, our approach from a staff level is going to recommend that our, our problem trees be emerald ash borer trees. They're the most critical to health, to health and safety reasons. Also, the, it'll just, it'll work out a lot better in our system, the way the trees are removed, if those are the ones that are approached by contractors, that we use here for other outside contractors to have access to those trees.
And will our own staffs also be removing emerald ash borer, or are we, or?
We do as our own program, yes, but this particular intergovernmental agreement would bring in outside crews to assist with.
Right, and they're going to bring their own contractors. Will these contractors be planting the replacements as well?
Yes.
Okay. And any idea, will, there'll be a variety of replacements, I would gather? Is that right?
Yes, correct. The goal will be to replace one tree for each tree removed.
And hopefully that...
It'll be based on feedback from our staffs on, on the species.
And that's, that's good to know. Now, and one last thing, these trees have to be on city property, on the parkway, is that correct?
That is correct.
I mean...
Well, yes, city-owned, on city-owned property.
And I, you know, I don't mean to delve into a warfore issue, but the one Ginkgo tree that we've gone back and forth with, I believe that is on, and I'm not asking for a commitment, but it's been a big complaint on the block.
Correct.
And I believe it is on the parkway. Am I wrong?
No, you're not. That is correct.
So would it, could it be a candidate? Because I understand that that particular type of Ginkgo probably, probably shouldn't have been planted.
According to this particular program and the parameters around it, it does not meet the Illinois Department of Agriculture's criteria for causing damage to infrastructure.
Okay.
For this program, it doesn't qualify. What we have done recently, our staff has treated that tree in hopes to stop the fruit droppings from becoming an issue.
Okay.
We won't find the results of that until August or September.
So...
If the results are poor and we're still having issues, then we're going to take the next step to see what another...
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and I'll be sure to monitor that with the residents out there on that block, so, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there a motion then to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Sterns. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. I wonder if you could go ahead and vote? Motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And the next item, I believe it was 7H, Alderman Sterns.
Right, and this, this would involve a couple of questions probably for Public Works Director regarding these, these containers. And I guess I'm a little bit confused probably about how we're going to make our citizens responsible for the containers, you know? Actually, there was a gentleman out on my property, much to my shock and surprise the other day, who was taking a small label off one of my city containers and putting another small label on it. And I had no idea that this individual was supposed to be there. Of course, I, you know, I have people come and go anyway, but I went out and I said to him, "What are you doing?" And he was replacing my sticker, you know, that thing, and he said, "Well, I've been contracted by the city to replace all these stickers." And I was like, "Okay," you know, I didn't know that. "So maybe you could help me out a little bit with what that was about, and then maybe you could help me with the concern I have of if the citizens," and I understand the city owns them, the citizen gets them, we know who's got which container, I think, and I think that's part of the sticker thing. But if someone steals my container, you know, if some truck runs over it, on and on, the possibilities really do concern me, then, excuse me, then who is, who is responsible then? I mean, because I can see this really producing some conflict, and I am concerned about that.
Alderman Sterns, the first question you had asked was about the 35-gallon containers, specifically, they were the only affected item from the manufacturer, Rarick. They had delivered them to us without some of the RFID tags. And so there was a handful of delivery they made, and so we said, "Well, you need to make it whole for us." So they actually refunded us the money that it cost us for the RFID tags, and they were responsible for going out in the field and making the city whole for those. So what you saw with those handful, they had to go out because they knew where they were at, as you indicated, so we were, they were making the city whole with those. That's, that was a positive, positive thing. So the other component of what you were mentioning was who's responsible. City code ultimately says that they are city-owned containers, all of the wheeled containers are city-owned. If the, if the damage to the container is, you know, malicious in nature, we, you know, we can then actually find the resident and we can have them, you know, repair that and make that, because it's a city-owned container. That isn't rare. It's a rare thing, excuse me, let me rephrase that. It is a rare thing for that to happen. We've just gotten going, we've only had to, had to use that for one person who put in ashes, hot ashes into their container, and they had to replace it because it, you know, it just was one of those, it melted the container, it had to be replaced, and so it, yeah, that actually did happen. But past that, we have had carts that were taken. We do our best to look for them on that day. Amazing how like the 35-gallon containers can blow, as we, we knew could happen, those would blow around, and so if we find them, we can use their serial number to identify them and get them back to the property owner. We actually encourage the property owner to look themselves. That's about all we can, we can do for those, so hopefully that answers your question.
But, well, actually, not quite.
Oh, you're right. The last part of it you asked was if, after doing all that, you don't find them, we've replaced the container for the resident, and that's what was in the council questions that you had asked, that's also what we'd put in writing.
Right.
So as a council, you're aware, we have been replacing those. We understand the council expects a very high level of customer service, so we tried to meet that in this case.
So you can't envision a scenario where there would be a conflict, where the city says, "You did this," and the resident says, "No, I didn't," and...
There are always times when there can be a conflict. But this is one of those that, you know, we, like, you know, with the hot ash, that can be one of those where somebody else poured hot ash into my, there always can be potential force.
Right. And in that case, here's my real question, in that case, then what? How do we resolve that? Doesn't the city always wins, or?
I don't know that the city code really allows for any specific mediation between that. I think that was your original question you had sent out. I probably would take that to the city manager if it was something that our, we were in, ultimately, in conflict about.
Okay, well, I would suggest that there be a process, because I'm just, I guess, maybe living in the older neighborhoods and such, but I'm so well aware of those, you know, times, I just had one when the city feels that a contractor put something out and the resident says, "Oh, no, 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 I put it out," and then it's back and forth, and then it comes to the alderman, which is fine, but I just think there should be a process to deal with these kinds of, you know, conflicts, and that's my concern.
And let me just make a comment, you know, and I think that's a good idea, however, we have to allow some discretion. We look to Jim Karch and the superintendents to manage this program. Our principles are to maintain, you know, excellent customer service, but also protect the assets of the city and our financial resources. So I think as time goes along, we certainly can identify those areas where it does make sense to have a written process, but certainly even right now, you know, these superintendents, I think, resolve a lot of things at their level. Once in a while, things get up to Jim's level, he makes a judgment call, and once in a rare moon, you know, we'll all, I get involved. So I think we do have a good practice already underway with our solid waste program, but we can also see how things develop, and where necessary, we could implement, you know, additional processes or policies if needed.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. Any, if there's any discussion, then go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. Okay? So there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. All right. Moving right along, we go to Item 8A on our regular agenda, Presentation by Illinois Wesleyan University Action Research Center Regarding Tax Increment Finance TIF Analysis for West Bloomington. And for the presentation and council discussion, we have allotted approximately 30 minutes. And so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Hales.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know we have several of the council members that were here when Steve Combs came up from Springfield to talk about the so-called Enos Park Neighb... up from Springfield to talk about the so-called Enos Park Neighborhood Improvement Association, and how they used, in a very creative way, a tax increment financing district to assist with improving that historic residential district. That put in motion a number of ongoing discussions, and, and what I'd like to do at this point in time is have Justine Robinson just share with what happened following that meeting, and to introduce representatives from Illinois Wesleyan University who are going to present this report for your consideration and information tonight. Justine.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. As City Manager Hales indicated, upon Steve Combs leaving the city of Bloomington and returning to Springfield, the, there were certain resident groups within West Bloomington that were very intrigued by the concept of a TIF district as a means to stimulate neighborhood revitalization. The WBRP Association being one of them, and of course, Mid-Central Community Action being another. On the heels of the announcement of their receiving the $1.5 million grant from the Attorney General's Office, we had been working collaboratively to identify tools by which that grant could be leveraged as a means to obtain other financing and stimulate development and achieve goals, such as the attraction of a grocery store to the west side of Bloomington, which is identified as a food desert by the FDA, and a severe lack of infrastructure, sidewalks. They have, you know, high-speed internet that could be taken out to the west side and, and made available through Surbin. There are a variety of needs that have been identified through the WBRP Strategic Plan, and staff is working to research opportunities to enhance development on that side of our community. As such, we were approached by the Action Research Center at Illinois Wesleyan University, who graciously offered some interns to help us dig in a little deeper to what tax increment finance has mean, has meant, excuse me, in the past, as a source of development and leverage for other financing tools. Four students were gracious enough to spend the semester with me, and they were overseen by Deb Halperin, who is with us this evening and in charge of the Action Research Center. And we also had Diego Mendez, I'm not sure if he's here as well.
Yep, he's there.
Yeah, he's here, from the economics department, helping with some statistical research and analysis. And it was just a stellar team. And we're happy this evening to have, in addition to Deb and Diego, Jamal Smith and Jonathan Bates this evening to present to you some of their findings, and hopefully stimulate an active conversation so we can continue to keep the citizen groups engaged and identify a means to help contribute to the development of the west side of our community. Without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Jamal and Jonathan.
You guys can run, but you can't hide. They, they both had me in methods. So, good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Justine, and to the council, thank you for allowing us to speak to you tonight. I'd like to apologize before I begin. I'm coming off a cold, so I'm probably going to clear my throat a lot. I'd also like to just, to sort of clarify before we begin, since we only have half an hour, we're sort of giving you the close notes version that we also, you know, included the report, and originally had a longer presentation. But at any rate, hopefully we can get the, the general points across in the next half hour. So I'm Jamal Smith. This is my fellow intern Jake, or Jonathan Bates. And let's get started. Our topic was, as Justine was talking about, a tax increment financing in West Bloomington. Basically, our research question is, should the city create a West Bloomington TIF district as a means to stimulate economic development? And, and the process of trying to answer this question, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't mention that we have had, you know, great working relationship with a number of people from within city government, especially Justine, but also including Alderman Black and Schmidt. We also have talked to members of county government and various community organizations that work in the west side, such as the West Bloomington Revitalization Project, the West Bloomington Housing Collaborative, Western Avenue Community Center, and so forth. So this question, this one research question, actually sort of consists of several sub-questions. Some of them are, are general to TIF districts, and some of them are specific to Central Illinois and West Bloomington. So generally speaking, we wanted to try and find out whether TIF districts are, you know, sort of generally a good tool. Do they generally succeed or fail? Or is there sort of a mixed bag? We also wanted to try and figure out whether there were any particular factors that determine whether a TIF is successful or not. Specifically, we tried to determine whether West Bloomington is itself a good place for a TIF, an appropriate location for a TIF district. And we did that in part by comparing it to various other central Illinois cities that have used TIF districts in the past. We, and looked at, you know, neighborhoods that had similar demographics and had TIF districts, and looked at the outcomes there. And so given all that, what did we learn? Well, the, it's, the answer to that is somewhat complicated. Basically, what we found through looking at academic studies, as well as central Illinois TIFs, is that there is no sort of clear, universal model for how TIF districts work out. Sometimes they are, you know, wildly successful, and, you know, you can create, you know, these excellent economic development opportunities, and create, you know, massive property value growth, and occasionally they don't work out. And we do think that we've isolated a few factors that may, that, that may help determine whether it's successful or not. So first, before we begin, I think all of you are familiar with TIF districts, but for anyone in, in the audience, whether here or at home who's not, here's just a really brief overview of how TIF districts work. Basically, when a TIF district is created, you, what you have to do is you have to measure the equalized assessed value of all of the property. Equalized assessed value is a way of, of measuring property values. You, so you determine the base equalized assessed value, or EAV. And over the course of the TIF, which is usually 23 years, excuse me, the, all the taxing bodies within that TIF district collect revenue based on the base EAV. At the end of the TIF, any growth that, and basically while, while that's happening, any additional revenues that accrue as a result of property value growth within the TIF district go to a special TIF fund that's used to finance development. And there's an initial impact at the end of the 23 years, or however long it's been set for. Any, you know, additional, sort of, the growth in EAV over that time leads to greater property revenues, property tax revenues for all the taxing bodies in that area. So that's the theory of how TIFs work. In our, in the course of our studies, as I said, we, we looked at some academic, academic research on the subject. Since we don't have a lot of time, we're not going to go through that in too much detail, but just quickly. Scholarly efforts to determine whether TIFs are generally successful have been inconclusive. Some studies have said that they generally do raise property values or lead to other sorts of economic growth within the designated area. Others suggest that they don't, or that they do create growth, but at the expense of neighboring areas. And basically, our, what we got from that was not that TIF districts are inherently a good idea or inherently a bad idea. Basically, that they have to be managed in an intelligent way, and, and that they need to be, basically, they need to be, you need to pick the right sort of project, and need to manage the funds from the TIF district in a way that, that, you know, you ensure that none of that is wasted, basically. Excuse me. So moving past that, we looked at several central Illinois cities, specifically Springfield, Peoria, Normal, Urbana, Champaign. And we also added one from Rock Island, just as sort of a special case. Basically, we looked at TIF districts that have been used in these other central Illinois cities of comparable size to Bloomington. We wanted to look at cities with a similar amount of resources to Bloomington, basically. Also Decatur, although Decatur, it turns out, has not, is not up to date on its TIF reports, so they ended up not being included in our, our results. But in any case, we looked at, at similar cities in an effort to see what has happened there. And basically, the results have been mixed. There have been some serious success stories. In particular, I'd like to highlight, there are a few here that I've listed. In the interest of time, I'll just talk about the Fiat Alice TIF in Springfield, which at the beginning of, of its life cycle, which was in 1989, that was basically an abandoned area. That was a former Fiat Alice plant, and was worth practically nothing. And was turned into a thriving commercial district, and saw a, an increase in property values in that area of something like 700% or 600%, I believe it was. So this is really the sort of, the sort of project you want to go for with, with TIF districts. You want to find an area that is really severely underdeveloped, and then make smart investments in sort of a targeted way that allow you to turn that area into really a, a positive Of the 26 TIF districts that we ended up looking at, that had, you know, updated their, that had up-to-date records, 15 of them saw positive growth in equalized assessed value over the course of the TIF, considering that these are all areas that were, you know, stagnant or declining when they started. That is a good thing. But that does leave 11 that saw either, that saw a negative growth over that time. So basically, what this shows is that there's a certain amount of risk involved in TIF districts. If, basically, if you, if, if the, the TIF district involves projects that are redundant or simply poorly thought out, you may not make back your initial investment. But there is great potential, as in the Fiat Alice plant and these other TIFs, and in fact, most of the TIFs, to see really positive results. As for what can make TIFs go wrong, there are really a few key considerations. First of all, as I mentioned before, you need to make sure that whatever investments you're, you're making are actually, you know, really smartly targeted. Basically, you want to find, you want to find some sort of, of area that's, that's extremely underdeveloped, that has severe needs. And then you want to make sure that whatever project you're, you're going for with the TIF actually addresses those needs in a way that would not be possible without the TIF. And also, in a way that does not draw business away from neighboring areas. In some of, in some of these cases, in some of the negative cases we looked at, and in some of the negative cases that are highlighted in the academic literature as well, you can see that planners didn't really take all those things into account. Basically, they either financed projects that were not totally necessary, or that didn't, or that actually took, took value away from other neighborhoods. And so, you know, when, when we talk about cautionary tales, that's really what we're, what we're referring to, that, that basically, like any tool, TIF districts can be used, can be misused, and it's very, very important that you, that, you know, careful management be followed. I'm going to turn it over to Jake now. I was going to talk a little bit about West Bloomington. So, Jake?
Thanks, Jamal, and thanks, council. So for the last few minutes of our presentation, we'll make this sort of specific to West Bloomington. The map that you're looking at here is the West Bloomington Revitalization Project boundaries. A TIF does not necessarily have to be drawn to these boundaries. It could be drawn by census tract, or by school district, or uniquely. But one of the things we note in this map is you see a high percentage of rental occupancy compared to the rest of the city of Bloomington. The people that live on the west side have high school graduation rates 7% lower than that of McLean County at large. As you can see, those who have a bachelor's degree, 30% less. Also, compared to McLean County, there are fewer members of the labor force, fewer people who own their homes, and the median household income is about $20,000 less, which makes West Bloomington an area in need of revitalization. Most of you should be familiar with the West Bloomington Revitalization Project, council-approved, and its goals, including economic development, housing, youth issues, education, greening, and safety and well-being. We found that a TIF district could address many, or in fact, all of these goals. TIF districts in Champaign, Springfield, and elsewhere have been used to improve infrastructure, improve greening, and obviously, improve housing overall. As Justine mentioned, the West Bloomington Housing Collaborative received the $1.5 million AG grant, and with that, they're also working on housing issues, attempting to revitalize the area. Mid-Central Community Action alone is rehabbing and selling 13 homes. Habitat for Humanity is building three new homes for families on the west side, and the West Bloomington Revitalization Project is repairing and rehabbing 20 owner-occupied Let's talk a little bit about the Enos Park neighborhood, which we thought was the most similar, perhaps, in our case study, to West Bloomington. It's located in Springfield, and during the life of their TIF district there, they built 30 new blocks of sidewalks, 12 blocks of historic street and sidewalk lighting, and planted trees as well, greatly improving the look of the community and the value of the area as a whole. They also acquired 69 properties, and with those, the city developed some, sold lots for new development in the area. They sold renovated houses, deconstructed and demolished some structures, and also sold seven houses on the market there. So what our research this semester has sort of told us about the success of a tax increment finance district in West Bloomington is that it would almost certainly have to be a mixed district. We found no solely residential TIF districts. So we would like to see commercial development brought to the area and have growth incentivized in that way. There's a healthy mix in almost every TIF of both public and private investment. So the city funds things typically like infrastructure, removing environmental contaminants, and things that the city funds on a regular basis, whereas some commercial developers are interested in privately investing their funds in improving value otherwise. We found that West Bloomington specifically is, as a population demographic, is a great area for revitalization. Compared to the other communities we looked at where TIFs were established, they have a step ahead in many regards. They're working in higher numbers, they're more educated in general, they have a higher median income than many TIF communities. However, as we highlighted, they're behind the city of Bloomington and McLean County at large in many of these areas as well. So we find that the success of a TIF in general is most largely dependent on careful management, strategic planning. And depending on management, a mixed TIF in central Illinois has lost as much as 30% in property values, or gained as much as 80% before the end of a TIF. So the next step is talking with the stakeholders, West Bloomington and the not-for-profits there that we've met with, talking with the school districts, who would have to be involved in the discussion. We found that many TIFs in central Illinois were able to work closely with the school districts specifically, so that they were not losing out on property taxes during the whole 23 years of the TIF, for example. So that's a necessary discussion if city council and West Bloomington are willing to take the next steps in considering a TIF district for- to take the next steps in considering a TIF district for West Bloomington. With that, we thank you for your time, and we'll answer any questions to the best of our ability.
Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you very much for the work you put in on this. I know you've really done a lot of research on it, and it shows, and I appreciate that you've looked at both the pros and the cons. One thing, when we think about our last TIF, which was the downtown TIF, it had a very specific map to it, and you had one that was like Lee and Taylor, and I don't remember the other, the north and west. But I think we've also talked from time to time about having project-based TIFs. Do you have to have a map? I mean, does it have to have specific boundaries to it, or can it be a little bit more strategic based on different areas, I guess?
Well, the, basically, I think the way to answer that is that you have to draw some sort of boundaries. That's one of the requirements of a TIF. You can, if you want, draw them to be just, you know, a part of one block, for instance. Like, if you really wanted to improve one building, you could draw the boundaries of the TIF to only encompass that. So that is possible.
Alderman Sterns, and, we've got several people. Sterns, painter, and black.
Just very well done and well-presented, and really appreciate your efforts here, which are very major. And I agree with, having looked into TIFs a bit myself, a lot of what you said jives with what I've looked into. Just a couple of questions about this project. You didn't specifically look at the TIF, relating a little bit to Alderman Schmidt's, you didn't specifically look at the TIF in Bloomington to see how it fared? Or you were only looking at TIFs that were current? Because this, the downtown TIF only closed out a couple of years ago, I mean, recently. So did you think about looking at that one?
Well, I think the thought process there is that we assumed that everybody here already, you know, was fairly familiar with that and had, you know, had opinions on it and so forth. So we really wanted to focus on--
And I appreciate that. I very much do, and I, and thank you for explaining that. Personally, I've never seen any numbers in, here in Bloomington, and, you know, maybe it's because there's a lot of data, but on specific EAV. And I totally agree with your parameter of measuring EAV in terms of success. I mean, you've got other things that are fine, but to me, it really is about, you know, EAV. And I never saw any numbers here in Bloomington specific to that in the TIF district. Do those numbers even exist?
I can, I'll share that with everyone.
Okay, so we do have that?
Mike Ireland did. They posted point and then the final numbers.
And when, and when did you get that? I'm just curious, or how, or did you ask him? Well, doesn't matter, I would like to see it, but I don't think it was ever formally presented to us, was it?
I believe so.
Was? Okay, well--
Sorry, I believe so. It was part of when the downtown strategic plan, the first time it came around.
So we got those specific, okay, well, good.
But I'll share it again.
Okay, well, that'd be good. But it would, I think that's, you know, good numbers to have, to look at here in Bloomington. And other than that, you know, I just thought it was very well-done. I guess, your points, I think, about pros and cons throughout are really, really well-taken. When I did some research a few years ago, I looked at Chicago, frankly, a lot, and all of the controversy up there, and all of the reasons for it, because there are so many, many TIFs, for one thing. Now, we're a totally different area, but I noticed that you do wholeheartedly kind of endorse, in the stuff I read, kind of wholeheartedly endorse the TIF in West Bloomington. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I would say that we wholeheartedly endorse consideration of a TIF. There would, in order to, before the TIF whatever gets started, you'd want to do a feasibility study of some sort.
Right, well, there's so much, so much to do.
Yeah, so it's, but we do think, I mean, based on the characteristics of West Bloomington, that there are certain, you know, blighted areas, but that there's also, you know, compared to other, sort of, other neighborhoods that we looked at in central Illinois, that in some ways, it's got an infrastructure already in terms of, you know, nonprofit organizations--
No question.
Sort of well-positioned, I think.
Could be. I see a lot of pros and, you know, some cons, and I think it's really pretty difficult to forecast, but I really do appreciate all the information and the work that you did. Thank you.
Alderman painter, and then black.
Thank you. You did a really great job with that, and I appreciate all your hard work. I really liked when you said that you were going to engage the public and get their ideas. I was just curious, how are you going to engage them? Because I think that's one of the most important things for whether this will succeed or fail.
Hi, May. Rose between two thorns, no. I think that's one of the questions that we do want to put forth to the Council, is whether you want us to spend more time moving forward on this type of a concept and potential tool for economic development or not. If you do, we've already engaged the Action Research Center at Illinois Wesleyan for next semester for another set of marketing interns, whereby a communication strategy, and of course, working with Nora, we can help outline and make sure that we do fully engage all of the taxing bodies and all of the stakeholders that would be involved in that process. Having heard stories of what happened with the downtown TIF scenario, we do want to make sure that it's a transparent process, that we are clearly and effectively and efficiently communicating each step of that process, and engaging everyone who needs to be at the table as early as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Alderman black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for all the hard work you've done, and I really appreciate you engaging with me and the other members of stakeholders in the community. That's really important as we move forward through this process. I guess I'm kind of looking more at a high level. I read through the paper and thinking about, what would you think, and there's going to be a converse to this, did you find in the research any kind of specific trend of, in all the different TIFs that you looked at, because there's, on your EAV graph of success on, over the course of the life, that you see ones that are, you know, 200, 600%, and some that are just barely, you know, 20% loss? Was there a specific, I don't know, trait, characteristic that you saw, kind of wove through all of them, that led to some success? I'm going to ask the converse as well.
Okay, sure. Well, I think that, at least in, we couldn't study every single one of them, there were too many, but we did take a look at the most successful TIFs. And we did see that, in the case of the most successful TIFs, they really started from very little, and they, you know, they managed to put, you know, commercial development in place that was not, you know, duplicating other developments throughout the city.
So kind of creating something unique, would you say, would be kind of like the overarching? And the ones that failed, did you see something that kind of wove through all the ones that, you know, I don't want to say failed, or just didn't quite deliver the way people wanted them to, or didn't deliver as much?
Yeah, I mean, in some ways, it's sort of hard to tell with some of them. I mean, it, basically, in almost all those cases, just generally speaking, what you're looking at is that, for whatever reason, the investments they made didn't actually, either they spent too much on them and couldn't possibly make them back, or for whatever reason, they just didn't, you know, didn't end up being as successful as they were supposed to be. And why that is, is there are any number of reasons for that, basically.
So you kind of alluded to like a management challenge, that the management wasn't quite there, or maybe the vision was off, or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, if, basically, if, you know, we looked at one case, for instance, in Springfield, where there was a development of what was already sort of a high-end office building, and basically, somebody knew somebody in the economic development office, I think, and managed to get approval--
Doesn't happen in Springfield. I'm not familiar with that.
Managed to get approval for a project that really they had no business getting approval for, and so it was basically kind of a boondoggle. And so that thing can happen, certainly.
Sure.
But I think in Bloomington, that stuff is going to be a bit rarer than in some of your other, certainly than in somewhere like Chicago, but even--
Absolutely.
Even some other central Illinois cities, I think. Can have more efficient government here than--
I got you, yeah. Well, again, thank you so much for your work this semester, and thank your colleagues who weren't here this evening, and did some great work. It's meaningful work that we can actually build on and have, continue that discussion. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
To Alderman Fazini, Lauer, and Milowamboy.
Let me share just a little bit. I attended a seminar on financing in Illinois, and it was on TIFs in particular in Chicago last week. And I think we also studied four other states, and how the TIF districts worked in each state. Every one of them different, but the success in TIFs got down to two things. Number one, management of the TIF once it was established. And number two, a solid business plan for why it was going to be successful. So it really, just sort of like applying for a loan. If your business plan is solid, and you have good people managing it, it'll succeed. And if it has little quirks, like it was somebody's relative, or it's one building, and if that doesn't work, we're done. Even the ones where it was one building, they suggested you have a much broader one, so that you don't have to reapply for another TIF, and you could do something else within that broader district if that particular one building doesn't work. So, business plan, management after it gets started. Fairly simple.
Yeah, it's sort of unfortunate how simple it is in some ways. I would like to get up here and present you guys with a very specific list of things, but really, it pretty much seems to come down to management, planning and management.
We have run out of time, but I'm going to use our discretion to keep going, because we have two more Aldermen that want questions. Alderman Lauer, and then Milowamboy.
Okay, well, just real quick, again, thanks, and great, great, great job here. Did you do any analysis in terms of crime data prior to a TIF, and then after the TIF got going, or after it was completed?
Frankly, no.
Okay. And did you also look at foreclosure rates prior to, during, and after the TIF took effect as well?
That's also something--
One of the big things that I, you know, am troubled with, with one of these types of projects, is that we're raising property values, which raises taxes, okay? Revenue's what we're concerned with, but from a personal standpoint, how do those folks continue to pay the additional taxes without any real relevant addition to their income as a demographic? And so that's, that's the area that I'm concerned with. If we're requiring more by raising their property values artificially, then how do we, in effect, allow them to increase their income to cover that additional expense? So, just a thought.
Alderman Milowamboy.
Okay, thank you. I agree. You guys did a fantastic job. Thank you very much. I guess I have a couple of questions. The first one would be if you got a sense from the different taxing bodies about their reaction, you know, whether it was enthusiastic, say, go forth and conquer, or not.
Well, I think in order to get a more detailed answer on that, I might want to talk to Deborah, who has had conversations with Superintendent for District 87, who I believe was not, you know, totally opposed to the idea. So, but beyond that, I'm afraid I can't really give you a lot of specifics, but certainly that's an important consideration.
Just as a brief, about a year ago, I had a conversation with Barry Riley, and he said that just don't make the entire downtown a TIF again for 23 years. So he was fine, in a sense, or potentially fine, with more surgical, careful tips, maybe along the lines of what Alderman Schmidt had suggested, that maybe, if you're talking about maybe a singular block, or maybe two blocks, or maybe even a singular building, rather than a really big area. Anyway, didn't mean to interrupt, but that, it seemed like District 87 was potentially okay, as long as we were careful and surgical. But you had other questions?
Sure. Okay, thank you. That's a good answer. The other question I had was about gentrification, you know, did you, you know, in your research, did you find people, did you find a way for people to stop that process, if it were to happen? Because I know that's typically the concern with TIFs, you know, in many of the areas that I've seen.
Yeah, that was, we certainly were thinking about that. Excuse me. I think that actually sort of goes hand-in-hand with what Alderman Lauer was saying, you know, if you're raising taxes, you know, how do you make sure that doesn't hurt the people there? And certainly, you know, the TIF district could not be the be-all and end-all of projects in West Bloomington, where we would certainly suggest that, in addition to this, that other projects that, you know, more sort of directly, that, you know, help raise, you know, incomes and so forth in the west side would be great. Also, we were mostly looking at, most of the TIF districts that we looked at were commercial, primarily commercial, which would not have as much of an effect in terms of gentrification, because you're not dealing with housing. So we would, we do like the idea of dealing somewhat with housing, you know, sort of rehabbing old houses, and doing, you know, streetscaping in neighborhoods and stuff like that. Those are some possible projects, but certainly, that would be an important concern in any sort of housing, even partial, partially residential TIF. You'd have to make sure that you're not driving people out of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and excellent job. And we have Diego, you should take a bow as well. Thank you all. And obviously, this is a discussion we're going to continue with, but moving right along from TIFs to sewers. Item 7B, Locust Street Combined Sewer Overflow Elimination and Water Main Replacement, Phase II Construction Budget. And I will, we have a 10-minute presentation and then a 20-minute discussion. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, and I guess Mr. Karch, who's already up here.
Thank you, Mayor. There, the so-called Phase II of the Locust Colton CSO elimination project is something that has been discussed at the staff level, even during the budget process, for a number of reasons. It didn't make it into the budget. I want to come back to some of those here shortly, but first, what I'd like to do is have Jim just give an overview of this proposed Phase II, what's included in the project, what did we learn from Phase I, what do we see as some of the improvements that would be included, that maybe weren't in Phase I? How are we continuing to try and to learn from the first $10 million Phase I project? As Jim finishes, I'll come back to some of the ongoing issues we're still looking at, so on and so forth. But first, Mayor and Council, let's turn to Jim for an overview of this project, which is a continuation of a very expensive and a large geographic area that is needing to have separation of these combined sewers. So Jim Karch.
Thank you, City Manager Hales. Mayor and City Council, tonight, we're going to be talking about Phase II of the Locust Colton CSO elimination. Phase I was completed in August of 2013. This one is going to be smaller. The first one was $10 million in nature, the largest project the city of Bloomington has undertaken, up until we get into this bond work. It's going to be matching that. But until then, this was one of the largest pieces we've done. Really quick, just a quick highlight for you with the combined sewers. We've talked a lot about them in the past, but it's always good to keep on your radar as a council. If you look up on the screen, you can see the purple or bright pink in hue, depending upon how you see colors, for myself. The center part of town, there's a lot of combined sewers out there. Let's briefly talk about the separated sewer system compared to a regular combined sewer system. So you have a separated sewer system, which you see up on the screen. The house, whenever it takes a shower, flushes the toilet, it goes into a sanitary sewer. Whenever the rain comes, you have the runoff that goes into the creek, Sugar Creek. Very nice visual. Combined sewers are a little bit different. Whenever you take a shower, flush the toilet, it goes into a pipe that in turn takes the same, it is the same pipe that carries the runoff from the rains whenever they come. What the problem is, the combined sewer overflow, you can see up on the screen, the lighter orange, is whenever there gets to be too much water in those combined sewers. They were not originally designed to take some of the flows that they get now. You get 10-year, 100-year storm events, and those combined sewers get filled more than they can handle it, exceeds their capacity. And that's where you have this overflow pipe, and that's where you get, that goes into a creek. The EPA regulates those. The EPA regulates those, and the city of Bloomington has a permit with, on an annual basis, we spend $20,000 a year on that permit. Again, as a reminder, we have 82 miles of combined sewer in the city of Bloomington. That's out of a total of about 700 miles for sanitary storm drain, sanitary forest main. Out of about 420 centerline miles, we have about 800 lane miles. It's a lot of pipe that we have in the ground. So we're not alone. It's good for me to remind you of that. Bloomington is one of about 750 communities in the United States, about 100 in Illinois, that struggle with combined sewers. So we talk a little bit about, specifically for us, we talked about that we are regulated by an EPA permit. That's why we're doing this. That's why we're working toward this. We are not like Peoria that is regulated. They have a mandate that they have to move forward with this. We are not under that, but we are under that long-term control plan, an LTCP, that is approved, and we have to continue to make strides toward completion, toward the elimination of those combined sewer overflows. We have a total of seven in the city of Bloomington. Most of them have been eliminated. We are now down-- We are now down to the final two. Locust, combined sewer overflow, and then also Maze Field, which comprises about three of them, which is under this budget year to be designed to be eliminated. It's good to keep all of that in context. So, as the city manager said, what lessons did we learn from Phase 1? It was a $10 million job with a lot of work that went into the ground. It was a substantial project that we undertook. Some things we were going to be doing differently this time than we did last time. For one, we weren't able to get all of the resurfacing done, as you recall, Washington Street, from Tuanda to Moore. It was chopped up. You know, you went through Washington Street, a major arterial road with 11,000 vehicles a day, and you had to put pipe down, and we didn't have the money to be able to overlay that and to put a proper surface on that. We're doing that as part of this Phase 2. We're going back to Phase 1 and do that. Finally, we're going to, we're asking for your approval to go back and kind of put that finished surface on there. As we continue from Moore to Mercer, we're going to be, after we're done, there's, we're going to be putting back a surface over the top of that. Same thing with Grove, same thing with Mercer. There's two other smaller streets in between there that we're going to be looking to do the curb and gutter, complete curb and gutter, because as we talked about in January, as a recollection, to bring this back up as a council, we brought the issue of curb and gutters to our council. What is out there? What is the practice that Public Works will do moving forward with curb and gutter? And we let you know that whenever that serviceable curb was gone, we'll be having to redo that. We'll be doing point replacement. But whenever there's no curb left, it's not serving the purpose, we have to remove and replace that curb. And that's, again, that's out on the website. We did that presentation that the cost difference was a $75 to $175 difference to do all of the curb and gutter differently. So, in this case, for two of those smaller streets, we're actually going to be redoing the curb and gutter. And so, that's another benefit that we're trying to do differently because of where that curb is just not, it is, there's so much of it that is gone, we're not able to salvage that. So, we're going back and replacing that. But on Washington, Mercer, and Grove, we're doing point repairs on the curb, as we've done in a lot of the places. So, those are some lessons learned. Another lesson learned is over the winter, you know, over the winter, whenever we do winter shutdown, the intention, you know, weather permitting, we always say weather permitting because you cannot control weather. But weather permitting, the intention with the schedule is to have a good, strong, hard shutdown, to be able to have a surface that residents are able to more easily get around on, over the winter period. So, the work on Washington will be done up until the end of this construction season, assuming we continue to have success and approval with the council. And then, starting back up in the spring of 2015 with the project being completed at the end of 2015. So, up on the screen, you have the schedule. We're looking to advertise this project, should the council, you know, kind of continue to give their blessing to this. And then, we'd be looking for substantial completion December of 2015. Again, this is an ongoing process. We brought this to you before in June of 2014 for this design contract with the intention of coming back to you, getting your approval now. It's also important that you'll know, you'll have another opportunity. Should we go through, when we go through this process, and we award, we open the bids, and if we get good pricing, we say, this is what we want to do, we'll take it back to you as a council to say, do you approve us continuing to get that IEPa loan? What this project does, and this is a good thing for you to know, this is that low-interest loan that we had as part of the first phase, this is another low-interest loan. There would be a 20-year loan at 2%, a 20-year loan at 2% that we don't have to start paying back until after the project is completed. So, it wouldn't begin payment back to the EPA until the fiscal year after May 1st of 2016 is the anticipated time, if these hold up. So, with each time schedules hold up. So, that's kind of that anticipated timeframe to start making payments back to the EPA. But it is good to know that the city makes the upfront payments, the EPA pays us back. So, those are just some finer details that it's good to educate on. City Manager?
Let me just go through a few other things that we've been talking about staff and why this has still been kind of a work in progress. First off, there's still concern about the fiscal health of our sanitary sewer fund and stormwater fund. As you've seen in the backup report, the sanitary sewer fund is in a positive balance of 2.5 million, the stormwater fund only 0.7 million. We are concerned about the fiscal health, especially the stormwater fund, even to absorb these debt service costs in the future. We think that's likely, but again, that was a concern. Second, we are dealing with two funds, sanitary sewer and stormwater fund, where we do, we are going to be looking at the large operating budgets that are part of these funds. You know, these funds are asked to cover both operating expenses and capital expenses. But it is something where we, on an administrative level, we do want to audit what the operating portion of those funds, make sure they're appropriate, defendable, things of that nature. So, that's something we're looking at. Third, as you know, we now have in our possession, and part of City Manager's action plan for this year is to bring back recommendations for a five-to-20-year capital improvement plan, one portion of which will be sewer and stormwater. And I think the total cost of deferred, or total cost of projects included in those master plans was what, 100 and?
139, 139 million.
139 million. There is some other pressing priorities in that master plan. The east side, concerns of Binward and even ours of how in rain events, there's a lot of water that gets into the east side sanitary sewer that at times overcharges, you know, is more than what the new Randolph Waste Treatment Plant can absorb. That is still very much a big concern to the city. And so far, as we're looking at the cost to resolve that, they are not small in dollar terms. Another thing we're looking at is the reimbursement from the state for these types of loans. As Jim said, these are reimbursement projects. We pay upfront and then get reimbursed. Where are we, Jim, on, how much have we been reimbursed by the state on Phase 1 so far?
Yeah, that one is, again, it was completed in August of 2013, but there are still outstanding payments where we went back, worked with the finance department, it still is in the, I think around $2 million, to where we are now pushing the state to, you know, again, do that reimbursement because the city pays for that upfront.
And again, that's, we're moving forward. We've found over many, many years, it is tough to get the state to follow through and to pay us back money. And we all know, you know, what about if they don't pay us even some of the money that is due to us in the local government distributive fund? But nevertheless, we're making a full court press to make sure they reimburse us, but it is unfortunate, sometimes takes a long time. And then, lastly, really appreciate, I think we have been making some changes in these contract documents to make sure that the contractor has more performance standards and requirements that they have to follow. I know Alderman Sterns might recall that one thing we had here, and in the last few years, sometimes they're working, digging up a street, and then that street is left for the entire winter without a hard surface. We do not want to see that happen again. Now, it's kind of a two-edged sword. On the one hand, and talking with Jim and others, the more requirements you impose, you know, the more standards and performance, the potential is, it could cost more. But we do think in this day and age, with all the increasing requirements of performance standards in these contracts, we want to make some improvements and make sure that in this upcoming contract, that contractor is not going to leave major customer service complaints and make for some very unhappy property owners who have to spend many, many months through the winter, and especially as things warm up, having a quagmire, you know, and just a muddy mess out in front of their home. So, those have been incorporated, you know, so this has been a work in process. As you see this, we have a timeframe, we have performance standards that would be incorporated in this contract to help ensure that we avoid those kind of problems like we've had in the past. Because I think the last thing we want to do, or, you know, our goal here is to minimize customer complaints, both to you as well as to us. So, those are some things that have caused, because of those, it didn't, I wasn't comfortable recommending it to the council. On the other hand, as Jim said, yes, we still have to ultimately work with the IEPa to ensure that these CSO overflows are eliminated. On the other hand, I think Jim and his crews have done a great job maintaining good, positive working relationships with the staff up there. They are ready to loan us another batch of money. And so, what I've been asking, and what I would ask tonight, is at least you give conceptual approval to have us continue to move on this timeline. Final approval would come when we bring that contract award to you, the fiscal year 2015 budget amendment, and hopefully, we'll have a little bit more clarity and answers on some of these concerns I've just mentioned to you that is still kind of a work in progress. Be happy to respond to any questions.
And then, I think that's what we need to move toward here is discussion time, and we're going to start with Alderman Sage, and then I saw Alderman Lauer.
Probably more of a comment rather than a question, and I want to echo David something that you said, because over the years, what I've observed is precisely that kind of proactive relationship building that our staff has done with the EPA. And why is that important, right? I mean, relationship building is good. What we don't want to have happen is what we've seen with some other central Illinois communities, where they lose control of CSO efforts, and where then the EPA simply comes in and goes, you know what, you're going to need to spend, you know, $50 million next year and get that done next year. Now, those figures aren't quite that accurate, but that's the reality, right? At the end of the day, we have to maintain local control of that, and part of that, again, is the funding, the planning, the proactive approach that our staff has taken, and so, that's noteworthy. So, thank you.
And Alderman Lauer, and then I have Fazini and Frue.
David, as I recall, the rate at, for Phase 1, the interest rate was close to 4%. Is that correct? And this is much less?
I believe it's 2.25.
No, I think it was very low.
1.25. 1.25, yeah.
It was 1.25.
I thought I remember something.
And even that one included 25% principal forgiveness, which is important, that this one does not. That is no longer on the table for us.
And do we have some backup financing options available going down the road in case the state, at least on the short term, so that we don't let ourselves get caught, kind of?
Maybe. Typically, on projects of this nature, with a storm sewer, sanitary sewer fund, you could issue revenue bonds, pledge the future fees that would be generated from these funds as the revenue to pay off the debt service. But as I mentioned early on, the very low fund balance, and especially with the stormwater master plans, 130 million, rating agencies may look at that and say, well, if the council's willing to raise fees by 100%, 200%, you know, very large, to ensure there would be, you know, revenue to pay that, you know, those are some issues we haven't fully vetted. But, you know, general obligation bonds could be another, you know, the full faith and credit. But we haven't spent as much time, given how the state is willing to give us some very low interest rates, work with us on 20-year financing, but if necessary, we could look at the other options too. But I doubt that we would be, from an interest rate standpoint, find anything as favorable. Plus, usually, we avoid a lot of overhead costs, issuance costs associated when we just borrow from the state.
I understand. I just, I'm concerned that we may find ourselves in arrears on the short term because of the incompatibility of timing with the state. Thank you.
It's also important to note, as a council, just to tell you upfront, when we come back to you for that concurrence on this loan, there have to be, as with Phase 1, those binding ordinances saying, we'll pay for this, and that's something that, you know, as part of that package with the EPA to get this funding, it's good to know that now, that those are some, you know, they need to make sure that the city has, you know, obligated that they will pay that loan back to them over this course of 20 years.
Alderman Fazini, and then Frue.
The city of Peoria has been mandated to spend a certain amount of money because they didn't operate as quickly as the EPA wanted, right?
Correct.
How close were we to that situation had we not taken the $10 million bond when we did? And keep in mind, this council did not vote to do that the first time. It took three months of conversations to get that done. We did get it done, and I think it was the right move. We also, when we had the at-large committees of the hall, the Finance and Administration Committee was beyond the $10 million bond. There were other bonds that were going to be recommended. This would be one of them that we could have done a bond for, but we wouldn't have gotten 2%. We certainly wouldn't have got 1.25% with a 75% payback instead of 100%. So, my question was, how close were we to being mandated like the city of Peoria?
In our discussions with EPA, we did not have a date certain or a specified timeframe when we had to meet that. But they were pleased, I will say, that in our discussions, they were pleased that we had moved forward with the study of the issue, and we moved forward with funding of it, you know, we have begun implementation. So, what they look for is, do you have a plan? Are you moving forward with the plan in a timely fashion? So, there have not been indications or any threats or innuendos that they're looking to do that with us, because I believe the city has been proactive in that. Whenever we saw many other communities start to kind of come under that armhole, so to speak, we kind of, we're proactive as a staff. So, that is, as a city, that is a good thing.
For both reasons. The city is going in the right direction, and as Alderman Sage said, you've developed a nice relationship, and that helps. Good.
Alderman Frue, and then Alderman Sterns.
Thank you. One question and a couple of comments. The question is, several of us missed that session a couple of months ago with the legislators. Did we talk to them at that time about the $2 million that they're in airs?
Actually, and that with the EPA, we did not, but we will be, what we're doing is we're reaching out through them to try to encourage, and at that point, I guess, City Manager, if there's anything else, we'll be looking to do whatever we need to do. I know we've been taking whatever measures necessary.
And the first priority is make sure we give them everything that they need, that they need to review, to approve, and inevitably, they're always coming back, I need this or that, or additional documentation. Once we do all of our part, then if they drag their feet, then we'll use any and all political means to put the pressure, you know, to get those reimbursements made to the city.
Thank you. Couple of quick comments. You had some excellent screenshots there that are going to be perfect material for budget discussions going forward, too. I think that's our real objective for us all going forward, is to make sure the public understands, was it 139?
The master plan documented $139 million.
We've got to understand the metrics, the miles and all that, so, great screenshots for some of that. And as far as conceptual approval, it sounds like it's the right thing to do, so I would offer my conceptual approval.
Okay. Alderman Sterns.
Just a couple of things. Obviously, Phase 1, Phase 2, it's all been in extremely long-term planning stage. Would you not agree?
That is correct. In addition, though, it's good to note that this Phase 1 and Phase 2 will compromise, comprise 35%, 35% of the total needed measures to eliminate this. It's good progress.
Right, and indeed, you know, a lot of the considerations of improvements along Country Club were held back waiting for this. And that's one of the things that I worked on my whole, you know, first term, is waiting and understanding why, and finally getting there. So, it's really great to be, you know, Phase 1 did have its concerns, sounds like some of that will be addressed. We won't have another Fairview Avenue, which is good. We're already starting to get some comments from the neighbors, as you saw the one come through today, about Warner Street. So, when, I have two other things, but when is the first public meeting, do we know?
Once we get approval from this, we'll work towards setting that. Obviously, we'll be involving yourself in that.
Now, in terms of the $10 million bond that council approved a few months back, that, I don't see the relationship between that and this.
They don't, they are different.
Thank you. I don't see that relationship. And finally, I see this comment here about the stormwater fees, that the fund will be unable to support the added debt passed 2016, so we're going to begin a rate and fee study.
We had been talking about that rate and fee study since the beginning of that master plan. That is something, it's good to note now, that the EPA has got their eye on. Whenever that says that rate, we're actually, as a staff, looking for how can we bring that recommendation to the council to make sure that it will work? It's good for you to know that we're trying to work through that now.
So, we're going to be looking at stormwater fee increases, it sounds like.
Actually, that's important to note, risk on a short snippet. It's been since 2004, since that fee was first put into place, and that was the first time the fee had ever been put into place. And so, it doesn't pay for all the things that we need now. Many different Aldermen have, Aldermen have issues with the, either drainage issues that we can't address, or creek restoration, or other issues that we've said, we're sorry as a staff, we don't have the funding to address that. So, those are the types of issues that we would hope to present as- So, those are the types of issues that we would hope to present as part of this rate study for consideration.
So, prior to 2004, we didn't have a stormwater fee, did we?
That is correct. We were one of the communities that started utilizing that fee.
I just think it's well to have this comment that we know that we're going to be looking at that. So, I mean, I think that's good, nice prior warning. And thank you.
Okay. I guess, since we're not really in the form of a motion, is there anyone who objects in concept to us moving ahead with this, with Phase Two? Okay, I didn't, didn't, no, no, we're not. We can't really actually ask a motion, correct?
We need a motion.
Yeah, that's specifically what we are asking the council tonight, to at least make a motion and hopefully pass it, giving contractual approval.
I have a presentation discussion pursuant to this. Okay, well, is there, well, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion that we accept this item as presented.
Moved by Alderwoman Sterns and second by Alderman Fazini. Is that correct?
Second.
Okay. And if we can go ahead, and, whoops. Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you very much. And we move right along to a continuation discussion of budget priorities. We've got approximately 25 minutes that we have here, and I believe Alderman Sage, I believe you were going to begin the process and talk a little bit about a framework.
Yes, and thanks, Mayor, because when we say process, this would be somewhat like the journey of a thousand miles, starting with one step, right? Again, maybe take a minute to summarize where we've come from a little bit and talk about some next steps that we can look at over the next, you know, few weeks and months. Back in the fall, I sent some information to the council, some articles about priority-based budgeting. One of those articles was in fact from the Government Finance Office Agency, and specifically entitled Priority-Based Budgeting. And I'm going to suggest that, again, as we start to kind of acclimate and talk about identifying the scope of this work, I'm going to suggest that I've started at least looking at that article specifically, the framework for the process that it lays out. It's very practical, I think more applied in nature, talks about some intermittent results and deliverables along the way, stresses the importance that the governing body has in this process. I mean, we really do own and control the priority-based budgeting effort. There's a fair amount of water that we have to carry as a part of that, and so again, I would just encourage you to go back and familiarize yourself with that article. I believe our admin office has made hard copies of that article.
Yes, I thought we were going to have them this evening. I mentioned them to Laura on Friday, but I believe that was her last day, so I was hoping that we'd have them for, but we'll make sure that they're in your boxes.
Yes, because I thought, as you did, that those would be available. But again, we can put those in boxes. So, again, that provides just a conceptual framework that I think will help us move forward. The second item, the next two items are actually our strategic plan and our citizen-based summit, and both of those are available out on our city website. If you go and do a search on strategic plan, that will pop up. If you go and do a search on citizen summit, we actually had two of them, the second one being, the last one that we had was in 2011. The strategic plan lays out some of the principles, values, and priorities that we've kind of settled on and started to focus on as a council. Why is that important? Because part of that water that we have to carry is in fact laying out some of those principles, values, and plans that we want to take forward in a priority-based budgeting effort. And so, again, I would encourage you to look at that. I will share with you, and David, I apologize, because I actually hadn't looked at that for a while, the great amount of work that's been completed related to our 2015 strategic plan goals, as reflected in there, there's a fair amount of work that's already been completed by staff, and I guess I apologize because I hadn't created that awareness for myself, as I probably should have over the years. Again, staff has done a good job. If you look at all of our staff reports that come to us on agenda items, you'll find that as part of the backup report, you'll always see a linkage to our strategic plan and the strategic objectives that are associated with that. I was reminded again, just looking at the staff backup for the combined sewer effort, that we have links in there that are related to our strategic plan, and one of those objectives being a well-maintained and functioning sewer system. So, again, we maybe have lost sight a little bit as a council of the strategic plan, but our staff has continued to look at that and link the day-to-day operational proposals that they bring to us back to our strategic plan. Then finally, is our citizen summit, and again, I will just kind of summarize what that was for folks who weren't here. What we did was, down at the BCPA basement, we invited approximately 100 residents from across the city. There were actually 10 invited from each ward. I know in my ward, I identified 10 neighborhoods in my ward, and invited a person from each one of those neighborhoods. So, we really had a very reliable and valid kind of randomly selected cross-section across our community, and that was important, I thought, because it kept us intellectually honest in the information that was covered that night. There were 10 at-large, I think the mayor, Mayor Stockton, also invited an additional kind of 10 at-large, so that's how we got to 100 that participated in that. We started with a very basic conversation on priorities of services, and we looked at it, again, from a citizen's perspective, what, from, you know, what are some services that citizens would be willing to either look at being downsized or eliminated, and then what are some services that citizens would be willing to pay more for? So, again, we've done some priority, some outlining of principles and values within our strategic plan, but we also then took the initial step to ask for some citizen feedback on that, which again is part of the water that we'll have to carry. You know, I think Johnny, you mentioned that a little while ago on another, you know, item was the importance of citizen feedback. How do we do that? So, these are going to kind of be the three items, at least at this point, that will kind of provide our framework going forward for priority-based budgeting. You know, I think the fourth and final piece is something that I know that I've been really enthusiastically waiting for, and I know David and staff have been busy on this, and that is that capital improvement program. That will very much help with our prioritization going forward, you know, as we look at different needs across the city, whether they're infrastructure, enforcement, economic development, capital equipment replacement, whatever that might be. Mayor, you and I have had a couple of conversations about how we might move forward with that. I think there are some resources that we'll try to tap, resources that won't cost the city any money. And so, there'll be more information and more details to follow up with that. I'll look to have a conversation, you know, with you next week about maybe what some next steps are. So, again, this is kind of a high-level summary and a framework, and maybe not so much a complete next step for our process going forward, but a conceptual framework and some of the information that we're going to use that we already have in our possession and I think are still relatively current and valid.
Thank you. Actually, and there, I'm sure someplace, it might even be in my office, we had the hard copies that were supposed to be distributed tonight, but we'll make sure that they're in the council packet.
Yes.
Summarizing the citizen summit of the past and the framework, the ICMA article that you had, and just in terms of how you identify priorities. There was a remarkable amount of consistency, actually, in that, the citizen summit, between many of the different work groups.
Yes, there is.
So, I think it's at the very least an important start, and as I believe city manager David Hales and I are going to be meeting with Bernie Sarecki, I believe his name is, from Illinois Technology Institute, who, they're looking for non-Chicago cities, metro cities, so 50,000 and above, there aren't that many of us, and they're looking to help six- to nine-month projects, a variety of things, they tap into engineering school, and they do this for free. So, it wouldn't cost us anything.
Yeah, and you're probably not aware of this yet, because I just had that locked on your calendar for next Monday afternoon.
Oh, it's on, okay. I don't even know it's on my calendar, but thank you.
I know, I know.
One day at a time.
I know, I know. That just happened late this afternoon.
Okay.
And so, we'll actually be meeting with him next Monday afternoon, just to talk about what are the preliminary steps, and then how do we create a working model for our council to work in concert and consensus to move forward with priority-based budgeting.
Right, thank you. Okay. Others want to weigh in. Alderwoman Sterns.
I'm, just, I hear this very, you know, high-level concept, but I'm really confused about how, when we get down to real specifics and how we do it. I mean, can I, other than just?
And that's what we'll be talking about with Dr. Sarecki, when we meet with him next Monday.
And again, I'm sorry, who is, who is Dr. Sarecki?
Well, I think the mayor just mentioned some information about him.
The Illinois Technology Institute, basically, they're offering to work with municipalities in the 50 to whatever Aurora is, 150 range, those have been non-Chicago metros, on a variety of different kinds of policy problems. One of them, we suggested, was budgets and budgetary priorities. That doesn't mean that they won't work with us on other things, but that they've offered to do that. I think what Alderman Sage is talking about is the framework that he presented to us in the past, and I think if we had the hard copy of that, it would probably.
And I still have my copies.
You do, you know what I'm talking about, okay.
Right, and I was under the impression when I got those copies and read them, that that was going to be the focus of the retreat that we had last November. So, but anyway, that's fine. When was the citizen summit meeting? I'm just curious, what was the date on that one?
I'm not, it was 2011, I think it may have been January. It's out on the city website.
I just wonder if, considering 2014, if we might not want to have another, you know?
I think that certainly is.
I mean, the issues are so different now. Thank you.
Okay. The Alderman Fruan and Black.
Just a couple of quick comments. We could all benefit from some additional organization this time around, so I think we're all looking forward to that. Couple of quick things that come to my mind, is I think we have some unfinished business with regard to the scorecards we were working on in the last month with regard to potential service or expense reductions. I think there's some real potential on there, where we had some close five-four opinions. I think that has some value. And then I do share the opinion with the citizen summit being dated, and things have changed with regard to pensions, condition of our roads, a sentiment of being careful for new taxes, which we've just created some revenue sources, so I think there's a good benchmark there, and I think it was a good process. But I'm all for, before we get too far down the road, we've got to get the public engaged again. We've got to educate them, all these screenshots, we've got to educate, and then we've got to listen before we get too far along with our work. So, thank you.
And I agree, Jim, and I mean, I think you're spot on, and I think that's part of the framework that we'll have coming out of this conversation, is that, and I'm hopeful to be able to leverage the skill of our new communications manager as well, to help with some of those very efforts that you just mentioned. But you're spot on with your comment.
And I think, just to clarify again with what Alderman Sage has suggested, when we chatted last week and looked at some of those documents, it was certainly not that, oh, well, we did it in 2011, right? We don't need to do it again. It's just that that could be a baseline, you know, where are we now in 2014? And I think there may be some changes, but I think there'll be some remarkable consistencies. That would be what I would suggest, because I wouldn't have been surprised, as I looked at that list, that, it wouldn't have shocked me if somebody said, hey, we did that three months ago, right? And so, but that's what we'll find out, absolutely. Certainly didn't mean to imply that just because we did the citizen summit, that we wouldn't do it again. Alderman Black, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. So, I reforwarded that email that Dave sent to the whole council just now, so it's all in the soft copy for everybody. And I just took a moment as we were going through this discussion, looking, I was part of the citizen summit in 2009, I was still in college at the time, and I remember David had just started, and, yeah, what was telling for me is, I remember that citizen summit very, I remember it very well, because a lot of the themes that we hear here are very similar to the ones we talked about in 2009, and I think that another one would be a smart move. But in the budget discussion, there's a couple of things here. I think I've heard priorities thrown around a whole lot, and I never have really understood what we mean by that and how it pertains to budgeting itself. And I heard a lot of trade-offs, like if you want this, then you can't have that, and vice versa, and I don't think the budget necessarily works like that. And I think a citizen summit might be helpful for two reasons, because I think that we, one of the overall takeaways I had from the budget cycle was, education is a two-way street on this, right? So, I think we need to do a better job of educating the public on some of the trade-offs, some of the choices that we have, some of the, you want to see cuts, what does that look like? You want to see service enhancements, what does that look like? And then us listening more to them, that's, I think, we need to do a better job of that. So, I'm very anxious to get started, and I'm very anxious to see what we can come up with as a long-term feasible idea. Thank you.
Other thoughts, perspectives? Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think what we can do related to that, if I'm not mistaken, we move to, well, no, actually, we do city manager's discussion and then mayor's discussion. We do have something related to that, that David and I have talked about, that we'll be announcing in a minute. David, your update.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I just wanted to say is I appreciate the council's patience, consideration, understanding. I was out in Utah for two weeks during the last two budget discussions, the council took some funeral leave, but really appreciate your understanding during my absence. I do want to acknowledge my appreciation of Mike Kimmeling, the interim city manager, for all he did, together with all the directors, Patty Lynn Silva, Carla Morello, Palet, and many others. So, it's a great team. Everyone stood up and assisted, so appreciate you, your consideration for my absence during that death in our family, so, but appreciate that, been back here, and look forward to continue to, you know, move on with priorities. We're working on some things, so I think, other than that, I, unless you want me to kind of mention, again, this is still a concept, but I did have some chance to talk to the staff members today. What I have indicated to them that this fall, we're going to try a pilot project that's going to be called the Bloomington Citizens Academy. Citizens Academy have been used in many, many cities throughout the nation for decades. Basically, they're kind of a training and learning opportunity for citizens. Typically, they run for six to nine months. Meetings might be held, you know, one night a month, you know, and the purpose is to help a selected group of citizens, people would apply, then they'd be selected, it may be a class of 20 to 30 people, but basically, during those six to nine months, these 20 to 30 people would become much more educated on, informed on, and have some great interaction with many of the senior managers, as well as rank-and-file employees, to learn about all the many services the city provides. As an example, there'd be one night, maybe for two, two and a half hours, where it'd be nothing but the fire department, fire suppression, EMS, fire investigation, fire prevention, et cetera, et cetera, so that the fire chief and anyone he might bring on would help these individuals for that particular segment, really become much more informed of that very, you know, important service being provided. The next month, it could be the police chief, and the next month, you know, it just kind of goes on and on. But over that nine months, by the time this class, which continues over that six to nine months, as they reach graduation and that, would really have a very much in-depth, you know, indoctrination, some may say, or at least greater education of, and being informed, and opportunities to engage with many of the managers and the rank-and-file of the city. The follow, and if the pilot project goes well, we could look at continuing it. We are trying, going to try and do this to minimize staff time, staff commitment, but many of the presentations, which you've seen from our department heads and other staff members, really could serve as the framework for much of that written material and other things to be presented to those individuals in those classes. I think one of the great value that other communities have seen in citizens academies is for people to be informed, and I think as that was brought out, they're being educated. They really, rather than trying to ask for an opinion, you know, on a particular service, they would first off become much more informed of these services, how costly they are, what are the federal and state mandates, you know, on and on. What performance metrics do we use? How do we determine how we, how our customers? How do we determine how we, how our customers feel about the services being provided? And each year, you continue to graduate, you know, more and more people, then they can in turn, as they talk to their neighbors, they talk to others and service groups and that, can very much have a very informed conversation and share those experiences they've heard, they've had, when they've learned about their city of Bloomington, the services, our vision for the future, how are we trying to improve upon, you know, the current status quo, and, and what are the challenges we're facing? So, that is going to be a pilot program in the near future. Nora Dukowitz is going to be assisting me as, but again, ultimately, we'll come out with further information on, for those who would like to apply, to be considered for this first pilot program class, how we'd go about that, and then we would see that class starting sometime in the fall. So, look for more information on that. I think this city, of its size, its complexity, many of the challenges, opportunities we have going forward, I think this is just another way to get more and more citizens engaged, and really engaged, much more in-depth than anything else we've tried before. So, just wanted to kind of share that with you, and look forward for more information on this, this, you know, inaugural, 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 gee. Hey, all right, thanks. Bloomington Citizens Academy, which will start later in the fall.
Well, I want to thank you, you know, David and I have kind of talked about this in pieces, and it's kind of last week where we finally, I said, well, okay, you think we could really possibly do this, this coming year? And so, we did announce it, I announced it at our open house this past Friday, and got a little bit of citizen feedback on it. And then just to make it clear, it's also, we'll learn something too. The more, the better engaged citizens are, the more we'll learn. And also, they'll be better prepared to run for city council, to be involved in boards and commissions, or just be informed citizens. So, I mean, it's, it's a multiple, multiple reasons for why this is the case, and I do, my, my knowledge of this is, was really stale from, from the ICMA, this at the late eighties, they were really kind of in infancy phase, and I hadn't heard much about it since, but I'm glad that David's been very supportive of this, we've talked about it, and we, we vetted it with the citizens who showed up for the open house on Friday. So, definitely, we were going to be making, you know, progress on that. And again, keeping in mind, we're, we may go to the Alderman, I think that might be a, kind of a men and women, the, a search committee, if you will. Okay, we've got, we got fifty people for twenty-five slots, you know, maybe having people ask us, have a personal statement. We haven't worked out all the kinks in this, but clearly, we want to be able to do that. It's modeled after, in a sense, the multicultural leadership program, or McLean County, Leadership McLean County. We might at some point have specific projects, perhaps even for people to work on, or something related to each, so that they're not just a, a passive recipient of, of the information that we might give them. So, again, this is all kind of a, a work in progress. And I'll just go right into there. Speaking of the open house, I want to thank Alderman Scott Black for managing part of the open house on Friday, so that I could go to a ribbon cutting in, which was the old Morris Tick plant. If you haven't been there, go there, the dust, everything else. I looked around, I said, how in the world do you have a junkyard and not have any junk? I mean, it was just, it's actually quite remarkable in what they do, so I would highly recommend that. But in order for me to go that at four o'clock, Alderman Black handled the open house. And we do have one announcement, not unrelated to the Citizens Academy, and that was a suggestion by Alton Franklin, that at our open houses, we maybe have a department head come in to talk with citizens and answer questions. And I have to say, thank you, John Kennedy, for stepping up to the plate. We will have John Kennedy on June sixth at our open house. I am going to run this by the next couple of open houses. There was a suggestion that we maybe re-alter, recalibrate the time. It's four to five-thirty. Some had suggested that they have to take off work early to get there at four, and I said something like, well, you know, we can continue our discussion, you know, you can maybe pick up, you don't have to take off work, and, and they appropriately pointed out, well, there's a lot of stuff you talk about up front, and we want to hear it. So, what I'm thinking of doing, and, and again, I want to float this by the Alderman and women, and the citizens who come to the next open house, of maybe changing it to, from four-thirty to five-forty-five. There are all kinds of things that often tend to start at five-thirty that, that run into that, or six o'clock. So, I, I kind of want to calibrate this, so we can have maximum participation, and not have to have people, Mike Gorman, who's in the audience here, have to take off a little early in order to come to our, our open house. So, I'm not going to do that yet, but think about it, if you've got strong feelings or other suggestions, then I'd appreciate it. There were some other suggestions, that maybe we have it immediately before the council meeting. The problem with that is, we have a lot of other different meetings before the council meeting. I'm, I'm certainly open to whatever, but I've certainly been impressed with the people who've come, many people with very, very different opinions, and they've shared them, and they've been, I think, extremely productive, and it's always something that I can invite people to. And they don't have to make an appointment, they can just show up. So, again, thank you, though, Alderman Black for that, and thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for willing, your willingness to do that. Just a couple of very quick things, because I know the hour's getting late. We, just a quick update, Mayor Coos, and I, and the mayors of Champaign-Urbana and Decatur, did go and meet with the governor last Wednesday to express our severe displeasure with the Illinois EPA considering having PCBs in the Clinton landfill immediately above the Mohammed Aquifer. And he basically got an earful from all of us, his staff did, I EPA did, but of course, we walked away with primarily a promise to look into this and form an investigative inquiry, and they'll get back to us. But we, I, I'm pretty sure, given the, the loud voice we spoke, and mine was particularly loud, that hopefully, we'll get some kind of answer from them shortly. This just as an update. Also, as, since we last met, we have, our application for the Route sixty-six Visitor Center did go out on time, well, the latest date that it possibly could, on May first. We are still hoping for that quarter of a million dollars to bridge our funding gap. That's one thing I did, I didn't want to push too many things on the governor's staff. We hear good signs, they're not saying we're getting it, but it sounds like, you know, things are at least looking very positive. But again, obviously, it's Springfield, so we can hardly expect logic. Just also, we had the Constitution Trail twenty-fifth anniversary, and thank you, John Kennedy, for providing me with great talking points. And I did want to take issue, Jim Carach, you know, I thought, you said we couldn't control the weather. Well, Chris Coos and I tried to take credit for, for the weather last Saturday. Yeah, we, we thought that that was the case. We, we can't deliver on much, but one of those things that we were, we were attempting to stretch. Other than that, I want to say, welcome back, Dave Sage, welcome back, David Hales, and I want to turn it over to our Alderman and women for comments. So, I'm going to see who has comments, Alderman Fazini, and then Black.
Yeah, two areas. The Citizens Academy, really liked the idea, and I think there are seven thousand people of India descent who, in their, not the last meeting, but the one before, said one of the primary goals of that association is to get more people from India involved in the community to take leadership roles. So, I, I think you might want to contact those folks, they, they would probably like to have somebody involved in this.
Already done it, Rob.
Good. The MCLP and the Chamber Leadership, both good organizations that probably are going to, not mirror, but sort of be in coordination with these. And as a past chair of Leadership McLean County, and a current chair of the multicultural leadership, I'd be happy to help coordinate any efforts there. This coming week, we're going to be interviewing people for multicultural leadership, so if you get fifty applicants, you're going to need to do some sort of interviewing process, and we are in our fifth year of interviewing, and every year, we've made it better, so don't go reinventing the wheel, come see us. And I think Serbin would, would probably, no, I, as the representative of, of the city of Bloomington on the Serbin Board, I will volunteer that Serbin would like to make a presentation to this group to explain how important Serbin is to bringing in businesses and people to our community. So, put them down as a presenter or a potential presenter. That's one. The second thing, teamwork. We had past Ward Eight Alderman John Hanson, and current department head, Jim Carach, and myself, at a breakfast on Saturday morning, everybody rearranged schedules. John called me to give me an update and say, Rob, there are a lot of very unhappy people in Brookridge Two, where John is the current Homeowners Association President, and it might be well if you could change your Saturday plans and come to our breakfast meeting at CJ's, which I did, and which Jim did. They were unhappy because of all the dust and dirt and everything in their street, because of an experiment that wasn't quite going according to plan. By the time Jim got done explaining what we did to make sure this plan would work, why it didn't work, and what we were doing to fix it, we took an unhappy group, and it turned out to be a very respectful exchange of ideas. And I, I think, Jim, you did a really good job of turning the attitude around for thirty people who appreciate what you're doing, and what the city is trying to do, and why sometimes experiments don't work, and how we react quickly to correct the problems. So, those kind of meetings are really good for us to be involved in, and it's great that we have department heads who, just at the drop of a hat, show up at meetings like that with a lot of good information. So, appreciate what you did, I know the group did. I've gotten two emails since then, expressing appreciation for how much effort went into what we did, and what we're doing to correct it. So, thank you.
Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments here. I wanted to point out that I was on Facebook this weekend, and I liked the Bloomington Police Department Facebook page, I also shared it on my Facebook page. I think it's a great tool to help continue and do engage citizens in what law enforcement's up to, and keep the public informed as to what's going on. As we start to do the, work with the communication manager moving forward, I think this is a, a tool that we can use to help educate the public, help hear from the public, and I think that the expectation moving forward is that it's more of a two-way communication street, and I think social media is one way to do that. Along the same vein, some of you may have seen it, I posted to my Facebook, staff was very helpful in having, having us host the Pepper Ridge fifth graders through the Promise Council. They came to the city council chambers, and they sat in our chairs up here, and we had a couple of them play mayor and Alderman while we passed some ordinances. Just a fun fact for you, if you are going to be spitting any gum near Pepper Ridge, the students will be very displeased, and you'll be charged five dollars fine for that. One Alderman suggested life in prison, but that was voted out. That was a lot of fun. And it was, it was a good learning opportunity for them, yes. We, we had a lot of fun, and I hope they learned something about how, you know, city government can work, and I think they all left with a better understanding, and they seemed to have an enjoyable time. And we gave them free backpacks and pencils, and they were pumped about the pencils, so I, I thank staff for that contribution to that, that event. And finally, I had alluded to it a couple of months back, and I, I think it bears repeating at this point now, that the weather's getting a little bit nicer. I was over in the Uptown Station over the last weekend, and they had a picture of their city council together, displayed in the, the exits. I think it'd be worthwhile for us to plan for a city council picture out by the fountain as, as weather permits, and if we can put, you know, a ten-minute meeting prior to a council meeting of us doing that, I think that's a, a top priority. I think it looks good for the community that we're all together, standing together as one, one organization, one team for Bloomington.
We used to have them up here, but individually.
Right, individually, I mean, individuals are nice, but I think it's nice to, you know, get a group shot.
Right, right.
If Normal can do it, we can.
Okay, we won't go down that path, but in this case, yes. Alderman Sterns, and then Milowambe and Painter.
On the citizen classes, yeah, I've heard of that sort of thing, and it does sound like an interesting concept. I do hope that council will be engaged about the process, about the, the way it will be set up, about the attendees, and about the applicants. I really do hope that that will happen, because I think that, you know, we could certainly get some input about citizens in our wards and such. And is there a chance of that, David, before this is pretty much set in stone?
Yeah, I thought I made it clear, yes, that's exactly what we'll do.
Okay.
Right.
And I wanted to announce tonight, it's something I've been talking about for about two years now, and that would be the Korea-Vietnam Memorial at Miller Park, which I want to thank John Kennedy, David Hales, and all of the staff that has, has worked together with, with me. And now, we have Kevin Lauer and Karen Schmidt on the committee to recognize the fact that the city has completed restoration of the memorial, which was a citizen effort. It was a, actually, a volunteer effort, and a wonderful volunteer, incredible volunteer effort to recognize, from several counties, including McLean, of course, the Vietnam and Korean veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice. So, to me, it's a very, kind of a sacred spot, and yet, the names were fading badly, and in fact, some of them were illegible. I did, I did do a Facebook post with some of the pre-pictures, and so if you're curious to see how they looked. So, we did some research, and John Kennedy engaged Pontiac Granite. Actually, I had somewhat envisioned a volunteer effort here too, and, and sure that we could have probably found those, those volunteers and donors, but it was great to have the city jump in, and we actually have highlighted the names, which was a, I wasn't sure, I don't think John was sure, but once we looked at some examples, once we saw how well and how legible these names would be, we decided that that would be a proper path to go down. So, the names are highlighted, they are clearly visible, and then the flame that had been installed in the original monument had, was missing. So, I began to notice this on my various jaunts through Miller Park, and thought, you know, what a shame. I thought it would have been perhaps an immortal flame, but it was actually a bronze flame replica. So, the flame has been constructed by Pontiac Granite and will be restored. And finally, on Memorial Day, we will have a very short, low-key recognition ceremony, because it is not, you know, it's not really a dedication as such. Nothing has changed. All it is, is a restoration to what it was intended, and what it was in nineteen eighty-eight, and what it will be again. So, that will happen at Miller Park, the, the recognition of this, after the bandstand program that is always done by the various veterans groups every year. It's the parade, the ceremony at the bandstand, and then they are going to announce that there will be this short recognition of, of these efforts to restore the memorial. So, anyone obviously is, everyone obviously is welcome. Kevin and Karen Schmidt and I will be sort of, you know, helping orchestrate this event, and we're meeting in advance about it. Any ideas or thoughts or suggestions or questions can be directed to me. And that's about it. I appreciate all of the efforts, and again, I'll be announcing it to the various organizations, again, that need to be reminded, and I think we'll have a wonderful turnout. Terry Edmonds, by the way, a Vietnam vet himself, and someone who was intimately involved with the original memorial, has been a huge part of this, and he'll be there as well. Thank you.
See, Alderman Milowambe.
Thank you. Just wanted to comment on the Citizens Academy. I, you know, as you know, David, I was kind of a big fan of that, and I thank you for putting that together. One of the things that I, I think, just in listening to the numbers, to me, it seems like twenty people over nine months seems like a low number. We have seventy-seven thousand individuals in, in the community, so I don't know what we can do to make it, maybe to add more numbers to that, but also, the length of time, you know, nine months seems to be a, a long period of time over which we might lose some people or lose some interest. I think back in, I want to say two thousand and four, I did something similar with Town on Normal, but it was over eight weeks. And, and actually, Jeff Fruin was responsible for the oversight of the program, and it was over eight weeks, once a week, so eight Wednesdays over the course of two months. And, and I thought, you know, it provided better turnover of citizens, you know, who would be better informed about our services. So, those are just, those are just a couple of suggestions that I have. And the other thing I wanted to say, Mayor, I, I appreciate the, the, I guess, the effort to provide more structure into our budget discussions, you know, with priority-based budgeting and, and things like that.
Think Alderman Sage for that.
Yes. Thank him too. Thank him too, because I, I think, you know, in, in looking at how the, the process went over the, you know, the past month or so, when we discussed the budget, I, I think at, at times, it, it seemed like we, we got a little bit scat... times, it seemed like we, we got a little bit scattered, or I should say, maybe distracted. And I don't mean that in a, in a bad way, but I think when we, when people get passionate about, you know, the issues, sometimes we, we have a tendency to forget what's the, really the, the big thing on the horizon that we're, we're going for. So what I, I try to do, especially, you know, looking at the next budget cycle, is to go back to our strategic plan and look at what's really important to us, and what do we want to preserve? What do the citizens want to preserve? So I, I think, you know, putting together this process will be very helpful in, in the future, as we have, I'm sure, you know, it's, it's okay to, for the discussions to be contentious, but, you know, but yet, I think it's going to be very important that we pick, we keep our eyes on the prize.
Alderman Painter, and Lauer, and Fruen, in that order.
I just wanted to say that I think the idea of a citizens academy is really exciting, and thank you for suggesting it. I also think Alderman Milowambe did have some good points, but as, as was said earlier, I think it'll be a win-win for everybody, and if there's any way that we could assist you with this, just let me know.
We definitely will.
Thank you.
Alderman Lauer, and then Fruen.
Okay, real quickly, I'm glad to hear that we're actually starting to have a civilized discussion on the budget, and I hope that we can get into specifics much more early than we did, and I'm sure we will. And thank you, David, again, for bringing that up. I think that's a, a good place to start. With the citizens academy, I'm all for that. I actually am a recipient of something much like that many, many years ago, probably over 40, and as was my predecessor, Bernie Anderson, I believe, and probably our current county board chairman as well, in the Boy Scouts, and some folks like the town of Hayward's current mayor 40 years ago, that volunteer fire department, as well as the local police chief, spent many, many hours with me, and, and I think it's important to probably include that demographic as well. Either Eagle Scouts or Eagle Scouts-to-be, it would be a great project to include them as well. So I hope that we will make, make effort to do that as well. Thank you very much.
Last but not least, Alderman Fruen.
Mayor, I was not going to comment on it, but everybody else seemed to be chiming in on the academy, so I'll add my two cents and experiences, and that is, I am assuming that we have or will be talking to Towne Normal, because they have had a very successful citizen academy for many years, and I can't remember when I went through it, but I went through it myself. It might have been when I was on sabbatical from the city council here about 10 years ago. But they've been successful at it. It's a great experience for me, and I see a lot of interest on the council.
Right.
So that's great.
I think that's a good idea.
I don't know of the legwork that's been done, so I'll defer to another discussion, but that's one more of those ingredients, and I know we've all worked hard on getting the public more engaged, so it's another good step. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I'll be talking with Chris by the end of the week about it as well. Great idea. Thanks. And, Mr. Hales, did you have a last word there, or is your light just on? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Let's see. Moved by Alderman Milowambe, second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Seconded by...
We're out.